For January 22, 2025, the time is 6:00 p.m. The first thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody will stand and remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The third item on the agenda, Item A, is the adoption of the agenda. I move to approve the agenda for January 22, 2025, the City Council meeting. Is there a second?
Rob, I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jennifer?
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. We'll go to Section B, the Consent Agenda, and I'll hand that over to Janet.
I just want to call to the attention of the council that there were three sets of minutes that were passed out with some edits that I caught. So, there's one for the November, I'm sorry, December 11th, City Council minutes that also had edits submitted, but you don't see those because they haven't made them yet. But they're mostly just typographical, non-substantial ones. So with that clarification, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented in the January 22, 2025, City Council Packet in the Supplemental Bill List, which is distributed as a handout to the council prior to the meeting, and also with the edits submitted and distributed to the council tonight.
This is Ron, I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Rob?
So is that for the minutes as a whole, Janet? All of our minutes that were in tonight's packet?
There were four sets. There's three that you have in front of you with redline edits. And the fourth one, you haven't seen yet because I just submitted them this afternoon and they didn't have time to make them. But they aren't anything that's going to change the meaning or the definite. It's mostly typos that I caught.
Okay. I just, I had one edit. There was Rochelle, which is my wife. She got on Zoom, but it was after the meeting had started. So if we can add her to being attendance on the Zoom.
Which date is that?
That was last, two Tuesdays ago. What would it add?
The January 8th one?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So I will amend my motion to include adding Rochelle as an attendee for the January 8th meeting.
And clarification, you noted that most of these are clear, just name changes. Is that correct, what I'm seeing?
They're either name changes or they're just clarifying statements. So nothing that changed the outcomes of any of the conclusions.
Mainly grammatical errors of sorts?
Either spelling errors, grammatical errors, things that were, I felt, you know, we needed to add. So no action was taken, those kinds of things.
Yep. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, Council, anytime we do this where they're made, kind of at the meeting, members are free to look at those changes. And if need be, we can bring them back at other meetings to further clarify.
Right. Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and an amendment to the motion.
You need a second to my amendment.
I'll second that, then.
There you go.
Okay. No more discussion? We'll go back to a vote?
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. We'll go to Section C, Presentations and Items for Council Actions. Number one is a public forum. Before I ask Jack to read out our rules, I'd just like to let everybody know that we've got to keep it to a limit tonight. I know last meeting we had, one of them got out a little longer than needed. If it gets too long, I'll interrupt you and ask you to get to the point. So, Jack, you want to read?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The public forum provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items which are not on the agenda. In this case, we're waiving that. This is on the agenda, but this is an important matter. We want to hear people's opinions. The public forum may not be used to make personal attacks, air personality grievances, make political endorsements, or for political campaign purpose. The council will listen to the issue but will not engage in dialogue with the presenter. Questions from council will be for clarification only. The public forum will not be used as a time for problem solving or reacting to the comments made, but rather for hearing the citizens for information purposes only. If the majority of the council would like to address the issue in more detail, it can be added to the agenda or can be addressed during the regular agenda of a future meeting or referred to staff for further review and response.
Thank you, Jack. I'd like everybody to understand also that this will be the last open forum to speak to the council tonight on these issues. In other words, if you have something you want to talk about on anything on the agenda, now's the time to do it. Once we close the open forum, that's it. There won't be another moment to speak. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to get up and make a comment or a statement about tonight's agenda?
Which mic?
Grab whichever one you want. You've got to say your name and your address. And kind of pull the mic down. Have a seat.
My name is Cindy Angel. I live at 14048 Furman Street. And I thank you for letting me speak. I left this meeting, the last City Council meeting, and I was so mad. And the reason I was mad, I was mad at two of the City Council members who wouldn't even consider the votes of the public in the last election. I voted for Scott, and so did 1,264 other people. And I was really appalled that you wouldn't even consider my vote, considering everybody got two votes, which means some of those 1,265 people voted for you too. And I don't know if you even took that into consideration, but I think it's appalling that you would not even consider it. Secondly, Scott's charges of 20 years ago where he was acquitted, he was acquitted. And Jennifer, that does mean not guilty. You and I had a conversation in the back of this council chamber right after you were elected. I overheard you talking to another gentleman, who is actually sitting in the back here, I saw him tonight, about Scott and his charges. And I confronted both of you and asked if either one of you had read the whole article where he was acquitted. You told me that that didn't mean he wasn't guilty. And the only reason he was acquitted was because he was a police officer and they couldn't, yes, you did. Jennifer, you did. And I have a problem with that. Anybody who doesn't respect the judge in the case or the police department, I have a problem. I hope you're not an anti-police person, where we have to worry about the security of our community when you vote on that. That's a concern of mine. And I, you know, when you don't have respect for the justice system or the police, I have a problem with it. And I did my homework on Scott. I knew exactly who I was voting for. I had never met the man before he started running for election. I talked to him. Did either one of you? I don't think so. I think it was just a convenient way for you to beat your opponent was to go out and slander him. And I don't agree with that at all. I did my homework. I not only talked to Scott and got his explanation, I also talked to two former policemen he worked with. And Rob, you know one of them. And it's not Ron. This is a former St. Paul policeman. You know who I'm talking about.
I don't believe so. You got a name?
I'll give you a name, but I'm not going to do it in public. You want his name? I'll give you his name.
We're not going to carry on a conversation.
You're flandering us, might as well slander them.
We're not going to, Rob, we're not going to discuss, talk with them. They're allowed to talk to us. We're not going to carry on a conversation.
Anyway, that's just my opinion. And I just was so upset last time when I left here. I just wanted to let you know about it.
Thank you.
My name is Marilyn Latin. 16010 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus. I just want you guys to all remember that you were voted in by the people, by the people of this community, and not by any special interests that gave you money and funding for your run as mayor or as a council member. You need to remember who you are sitting up there for. Not your businesses, your people.
Chase Roth, 8820 189th Avenue Northeast. Lord Acton, power tends to corrupt, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. As the council, you have a lot of power in the city. All the power, arguably. You have the power to hire, to fire, to create or terminate positions. You set the budgets. You have a big plan zoning and development. And what happens? With power comes the possibility of abusive power. What is abusive power? Webster's defines abusive power as misuse or improper application of one's authority, essentially using a position of power to take unjust advantages of others, often for personal gain. It implies maltreating, harming someone by exploiting your power over them. When an off-duty police officer enters a restricted area for a personal vendetta, that's an abuse of power. And the thought of somebody who's going to disregard the law like that sitting at this table is sickening to me. And you know what I'm talking about. I too read the article. The situation resulted in a four-inch gash in the back of somebody's head, 12 staples, and it cost a major municipality $30,000 in what we refer to today as hush money. I've seen how people react to the thought of $8,000 for a special election. What would a $30,000 settlement look like? If the four of you can't come up with a unanimous decision on who's going to fill the vacancy, I think you owe it to the people to hold a special election.
Hi, my name is David Lisca. 18126 Vassar Street, here in Columbus. I passed out, prior to the meeting, I passed out a copy of an article from the St. Paul Pioneer Press. I gave it to all the board members and to the attorney. I too echo the same as this gentleman does. I don't think that the individual deserves to be here or can be on the board. I'm not comfortable with it. The other statement that was made, that there were, you know, 2,000 some odd people, pardon my, I don't know the number, that voted for the other gentleman. There was also a bunch of people who voted against him. More people that voted against him than voted for him. So please, keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the audience here?
Lynn Carver Quinn, 7540 152nd Lane Northeast. I'm going to lighten the load here, okay? All what I want to know is that the Planning Commission meeting last week, we made a recommendation to the council to approve something, and I don't see it on the agenda. So I was just wondering if there's a problem.
It's because you got the two weeks to wait. And that was a mistake.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience?
Dave Polony, 16731 Potomac Street. I'm here to speak to the fact that I believe that Scott ran with you, Ron. Your literature and his name were on multiple mailings. You ran together. I think Scott should be excluded as a potential person, only because of his relationship with you. I also think that over the, over this election period, you had the choice to wait two years to run for office, not creating this problem of the empty seat. You could have waited two years and ran. So with that in mind, I think your choice to run one person against the two seats that are open created the issue, and I think you should address that. And I think the people of Columbus should know that the problem we're in right now is because of your choice to knock me out of the election, because you did not want me as the mayor. So if there's anything you can do now would be to recuse yourself from this decision because of your association with Scott, and let the three choose who's going to be our next council member. Or take and bring this to the city and let the people vote for who they want to fill the seat that you vacated because you wanted to be mayor prematurely. I believe the only fair thing to do here is to either hold a private election, a public election, and spend the money, because the wrong person up there is going to cost us more than $10,000, $12,000, $11,000, $13,000, whatever the number was. It could cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars making improper decisions, spending our money, like has been going on for the last eight years. Thank you.
Ruth Miles, 7828 Camp Three Road, Northeast. I want to thank you for having the opportunity that last time we were able to talk and stuff with it. And you went back that you were going to have the different committees put in applications with it. I'm eager to hear that application process and how you went about doing it. And I don't know if there's, if you finalize it tonight or when you do with it, but at least you gave us the opportunity to hear our voice and hope you make the right decision for all of Columbus.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to get up and speak? Or state a statement and would you give your name and address? You see anybody, Jack? Is that all? Since nobody's on Zoom and nobody else wants to go up, one more.
Marilyn Latin, 16010 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus. You, last time, or two weeks ago, you alluded to the fact that there's nobody watching, and there's usually nobody out here. The fact of the matter is, there are a tremendous amount of people that watch the reruns. I watch the reruns. I watch everything. So just because you're not seeing them on there and you're not seeing them here, they are paying attention to what you are doing.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're going to close the open forum, and then we're going to go into Item Number Two, the discussion of appointment to fill the vacant City Council seat of Ron Hanegraff, ages four through 15. Jack, you want to lead us into that?
The situation that got us into this is Mr. Hanegraff was elected mayor with two years, less than two years, two years still remaining on his term at the time of the election. Mr. Hanegraff had to resign his seat with less than two years. That creates a vacancy on City Council. State law is silent on the appointment process on how this works, so City Council may decide how it will determine the appointments. State law also provides statutory City Councils, which we are one, make the appointment to fill the vacancy, except in the case of a tie vote when the mayor makes the appointment. The council may appoint any individual who is eligible for election to that office. Generally, to be eligible, a person must be a U.S. citizen and resident of the city and at least 21 years old. The council may, but is not obligated, to appoint any candidate previously defeated in an election for the office. A resigning council member may not vote on the appointment of the successor to that vacancy. A council member who is elected mayor, however, may participate in the appointment vote to fill the vacancy in his or her former council position. After discussions of options to fill the vacancy, council reviewed the following three choices. Call a special election upon a current commission, authority, committee, or board member from one of the people, one of those that served Columbus, or appoint the candidate finished third in the 2024 general election. There was discussion and three motions that followed. The first one was to remove the option of the special election. The second motion was to approve opening the application process to individuals sitting on city boards, commissions, or committees that are subsets of the city. And the final motion was to direct the city administrator to provide written correspondence to all members of the Park Board, the EDA, the Planning Commission, and the Public Works Advisory Committee of the options to apply for this position. With that, there were three people that submitted an application or a letter of intent for the vacant council seats, and those were Russ McPherson, Lynn Carver Quinn, and Scott Wendell. At tonight's meeting, council will consider these applicants for selection to the vacant City Council position. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Jack. Well, council, we got three applicants. I am not really in favor, but everybody wanted to give their opinion. I'm not in favor of interviewing them. I think we read their resumes. I don't know if we want to go through that or not. Anybody having an opinion on that?
I'd actually like to make a motion, if I could. Since I made the motion the last time to do the application process, I've received a lot of phone calls since the last meeting with displeased people not being able to have their voice heard. I would like to make a motion to reconsider about an appointment process and call for a special election. Though it might take more time, I think it'll sure, ensure a lot more transparency within the process. But I would need a second on that.
This is Jenny, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion? I thought we went through this before, but we'll take a vote if there's no discussion.
Jenny, aye.
Ron, no.
Janet, nay.
Rob, aye.
So the motion is defeated. Any other comment, motions?
I just, I just wanted to share that I had to make that motion through, you know, receiving a lot of, a lot of phone calls since the last meeting. People that, like we were told, watched the meeting after the fact and things. So thanks for considering.
I also received a phone call from Mr. Jeff Derain, who I think has talked to a few of you. He could not be here tonight, but he wanted to let you all know that, I know he's on the Cable Commission, and I know that that's not being considered. But he was still interested, and I just wanted to make a point that he did note that as well.
Well, he was being very thorough, because he called me too. And he also talked to me at the Cable Commission. So kudos to him for his persistence.
Well, I made a statement in the beginning here. What's your thoughts on the applicants? Do you want to interview them? Or have you got enough information through their resumes that they handed to us?
By interview, do you mean interview publicly here tonight in front of everyone?
Right.
Or however you think.
Yeah, however you think.
I would, I would like for the four of us to sit with each, each person. I think that that would be great, because it would be nice to get to know the different people who have, have put in their, their request and nomination. But I think that that would be, especially because we aren't doing a special election, I think due diligence seems to be something I'm in favor of, because we have a very divided house here.
Well, that would be, we'd have to have it to public.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, it would be a public meeting by virtue of you all being there.
Anybody else have thought?
I guess if we did do it that way, what would we work off for questions? Like when we, we, we did the city administrator, we had a set of questions that we worked off, and we each took turns. But I guess any feedback on that would be appreciated.
Well, I look at, I think we know all three of them. At least I hope so by now. I am not really interested in bringing this out in an interview.
I don't know. I know Mr. Wendell from the time on the, the short time on the Planning Commission and Lynn from working with her on the commission, but I have no clue who this other guy is. I wanted to call him, but the phone numbers were scribbled out.
He's actually, he was on, he's on Zoom. He's my neighbor.
Okay. Why were the, why were the phone numbers scribbled out? So we couldn't contact them to interview them personally?
Private data, their protection of their private data. I, I believe that was the reason.
I think in there, they asked us to reach out to them if we had questions, and then we deleted their phone number?
Right. The information would have been available through the city administrator, I believe.
Anything that's published with phone numbers or email's address are redacted. Put out to the public initially, because that's protected information at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I'm going to make my statement. I've read all three of the letters of interest included in our council packets from Rusty McPherson, Lynn Carver Quinn, and Scott Wendell. I've also been contacted by former council member Jeff Derain, who continues to express his interest in being appointed to the vacant Council seat, and he could not attend tonight. So I asked that I reaffirm his interest. And obviously, he asked you the same thing. I appreciate and thank all of those who have stepped up to be considered. I have worked with Ms. Lynn Carver, Ms. Lynn Carver Quinn as co-chair of the Fall Fest and also in her capacity as the Planning Commission Chair. And I can attest to her strong community advocacy and her commitment to serve. Mr. McPherson is my neighbor, and I have known him and his wife Sheila for years. I can also personally attest to his interest in the city and involvement on the Public Works Advisory Board. So my vote is not about any concerns that I have with these generous folks who have stepped forward. My position was, and still is, that the elections are about the public's exercising their right to choose their government leaders. I don't know how anybody can say that they were, who voted against anybody? There was three candidates and two open seats. In our recent election on November 5th, just over two months ago, 1,265 voters cast their vote for Scott Wendell. And as I said in our last meeting, this was only 43 fewer votes than Councilmember Latin received. So clearly, there was significant public support for Wendell as the City Council candidate. I cannot think of a more fair outcome than to have every voter who cast a ballot for the City Council to have at least one of their candidates represent them. It'd be incredibly arrogant to think that I know better which candidate best represents their priorities than those who voted. So it's with this conviction and my respect for the election process that I would be in favor of appointing Scott Wendell.
I said a motion?
I can make an emotion, and if anybody else has anything to say.
Go ahead and make a motion.
So then I move to appoint Scott Wendell to fill the vacant City Council seat of Ron Hanegraff for a term to expire on December 31st, 2026.
And I'll second that motion. There's a motion on the table? Any discussion? Hearing none? Take a vote? Jennifer?
Nay.
Janet, aye.
Rob, nay.
Ron, aye. Would anybody else like to make a motion?
This is Rob Bush. I've reviewed Lynn Carver Quinn's, as well as the others', applications to be on council. Past experience is extensive in the city of North St. Paul, which is a much larger city than ours. Not discrediting our small town, but knowing, knowing the amount of projects that come through the Planning Commission in that area, it is extensive. 15 years on that Planning Commission. Served here as two years as Planning Commission Chair. Co-chaired with Janet on the Fall Fest for two years, which, which both were, both years were very successful due to both, both years' involvement in that. So I would like to make a motion that we appoint Lynn Carver Quinn for the vacant seat of Ron Hanegraff.
This is Jenny, I'll second.
So we have a motion on the table, and it's seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Jenny, aye.
Janet, nay.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, nay. So I guess we got to look at you, our city attorney. What do we do? What do we do next?
Unless there are any other motions that might pass, you are deadlocked. And in that case, the statute provides that the mayor appoints the vacant seat, person for the vacant seat.
Well, I'd like to see a compromise or something, but it sure doesn't appear it's going to happen. So. Pardon? We got, everybody made a motion. I don't know who's talking out there.
Mr. Mayor, we don't take comments from the floor outside of public, open forum, so that's.
Okay. No comments. I, I just want to make a couple of statements here. Number one, just because we had an open forum, and people get to shoot at people, and you don't get to return the fire. When we had an election on November 5th, there were three people that ran for council. We could have had two, and nobody out there would have had a choice. You wouldn't have had a choice to vote for anybody, because the two people are going to get in. The same thing happens with the mayor. If one runs for mayor and nobody runs against him, I guess they're the mayor, because there's no other option. So I agree with, fully with what Lynn says. There's 1,200 people out there that voted for Scott Wendell. I also have to say, and I can, I don't sit and count them either, Rob and Jennifer, but I get calls too. I got a lot of calls too, about stand your ground, stay with us, the voters, the 1,200. So just remember that, that we're all here to work together, and it'll work out. But I do believe that you did have a vote, and anybody who wanted to run could have ran, but nobody did. You could have had a mayor who was elected years ago with nobody running against him. If that's what you want, you always have that choice. And it'll come up in a couple of years. So I'm going to go with Scott Wendell as our next council member. Jack?
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, your options are to swear in Mr. Wendell and have him take his seat this evening. Since that's not on the agenda, you'd have to amend the agenda. It would take a majority vote to amend the agenda. The alternative is to swear him in this week, and then he could be seated at the next meeting.
I move that we do it outside of the public eye, like all the rest of us had to do.
I don't think you had to. It was a choice.
Right.
I mean, I, I agree that let's not do it tonight. I don't want to amend the agenda. I'd like to get through the rest of the things. But I just want to clarify that, that whether you're in the public eye or you're not is up to the candidate to decide. We all had that choice.
That's fine. I think if it's not on the agenda, then what would happen in the normal course is between meetings, he would be sworn in, and he'd be seated at the next meeting.
And in response to that, maybe that was just a confusion of mine, because both times I was sworn in beforehand. And that just, I could have assumed that, right? Due to being COVID, when we got sworn in individually by ourselves, so.
Yeah, that's okay. I, I know that The Times had Forrest Lake in the paper swearing in during the meeting, but that's fine. And if, if Jack would not accept it, I mean, if Scott wouldn't accept it, then we can turn it to the next council meeting. But he could do it right after this meeting also, too, whatever. Okay, we'll go on to the next item on discussion, appointments to commissions and committees and boards, pages 16 through 19. Jack?
Assignments of city council persons to commission committees, authorities, WMOs, and other public advisory boards as liaisons or members are recommended by the mayor and confirmed by city council. As this council was not fully seated until January the 2nd or approved, only those essential appointments necessary for meetings to be held prior to this council meeting were made on January the 8th, 2025. Those appointments were that of deputy mayor, park board liaison for the first quarter of 2025, excuse me, park board liaison, and then the alternate for the park board, planning commission liaison for the first quarter of 2025, and the personnel committee. The following remaining are commission authority and committee-appointed positions recommended by Mayor Hanegraff for consideration. The first one is the planning commission. There's three quarter, there's quarter terms for each one of those. Jennifer Latin was appointed for the January through March term. And at this time, Mayor Hanegraff recommends that Janet Haglen be appointed for the April through June term, followed by Rob Bush for the July through September term. And at this time, since Mr. Wendell was recommended for appointment, Mr. Wendell for the October through December term.
Jack, did I miss anything on there where you said, I'll take any, the mayor will take an open position?
And, and Ron has volunteered to be the alternate for anyone that can't attend.
If you got a day, you got to get out of there, and you can't be there. Okay, thank you, sorry.
For the fire department liaison, Mayor Hanegraff recommends himself and councilperson Rob Bush as the appointments to this board. The fire department meets as noticed by the adoption of the Forrest Lake Columbus Fire Board meeting schedule, and that is seen to come out generally, it's about four times a year. For the Anoka County Sheriff's Department, Mayor Hanegraff recommends that he be the liaison to that position. Meetings are scheduled as needed, and last year, there was only one meeting. For the Sunrise River Water Management Organization, it's recommended by Mayor Hanegraff that councilmember Janet Haglen and citizen member Tim Melchior be recommended for reappointment to that board. Both of them have a long line of service on there and have a great body of knowledge on that board. In addition, the city is also in the Rice Creek and Coon Creek watershed management districts. Councilperson Haglen is the current city liaison to the Rice Creek Water Management District Board and is recommended for reappointment to that organization. Currently, there is no liaison, liaison to the Coon Creek Water Management District. Mayor Hanegraff has requested that any councilperson that has interest to serve on this board, if they wish to volunteer for that, they will be considered for appointment to that organization.
Should we wait till Scott's on here to fill that?
Yeah, we can, we can wait till next week if you want to do that.
Yeah, let's hold off on that.
Also, the, also, there's the Forrest Lake Cable Commission. Sue Wagaman was the city council representative. Sue did not run for reelection, so she is no longer the elected representative to that. That position is still vacant and open. If you want to wait till next time, I don't think they have. Janet, do you know when their next meeting is?
Uh, let me look here. I have the agenda. Next meeting is March 20th.
Okay. We don't have to make that appointment at this time. We can wait till everybody's sworn in, everybody's seated. board that requires an appointment, or not a board, it's the Fall Fest Committee. It's mostly been a volunteer position. Councilmember Haglen has served as kind of the coordinator of that for the last two years, and I think she wants to reduce her role in that. So staff is essentially looking for direction as to the need for a council liaison to this committee and to find the degree of staff responsibility for the Fall Fest Committee for 2025. So if you'd like to appoint a council member as a liaison and designate for further discussion what staff's responsibilities are going to be in this, mostly it's been on a volunteer basis. Lori Spangler, our deputy city clerk, has handled most of the coordination of that from the staff level with the input of several other staff over the past year. And all we need to do is make sure all those roles are defined, and we have someone that's going to be head of that from the city level. And going forward too, I think it's going to, it's appearing more and more likely that the city's going to have to take a bigger role in this to make sure we have coordination of the event.
I'm not sure what you're asking. Do you want us to discuss this, or?
Yeah, I'm asking to, we're looking for direction on what to do on this.
Anybody that wants to volunteer?
Well, let me, let me, let me interject. I mean, I think, I think in the past, as, as Jack has said, it's been primarily a volunteer position. I mean, prior to 2019, it was really run by the Lions and the seniors. So I think that there's been a lot of work done in the last couple of years. Lynn has done an amazing job with fundraising. She's got that down to a, you know, a fine science, and has, we've worked out a lot of policies and procedures related to that. And I've done a lot of work in terms of trying to put some of that structure together, too. One of the things that's been a challenge as a, as even a council member trying to do this, is that there's a lot of parts to this that you really need to be a staff member to execute. You know, whether that's contracts with Anoka County for the, for the traffic control and things like that. There's a lot of ideas that come up that are, I don't know, can we do that, or can't we do that? Is that legal? Who can do that? That sort of thing. So what Jack and I have talked about, we talked about this last year, that I really felt that it was time for the city to, for city staff to take a leadership role in this, and then have a group of volunteers that they can assign tasks to. We didn't actually have enough staff last year to do that, and that is why Lynn and I co-chaired it once again. But I think we do now with, with the hire of Erin. And I'd really recommend that, you know, in the next week or two, we sit down and we really fine tune, what is, what is staff going to do? What's the volunteer group going to do? And then you can go back and ask for volunteers for specific things. I think, I think how we've done it in the past doesn't make sense anymore, now that we have staff on board that have expertise and can, can actually put this, put this event together. And it's so, it'll be so much easier than us on the outside trying to figure out how to get this, how to get this to work.
So question, even in a reduced capacity, would there, I think that would be important to still have a liaison. Are you still interested in that position? Or is that something that you'd be willing to pass the torch on?
I'm more than willing to pass the torch on it. And I think what I'd like to do is be able to define what that liaison position is, because, you know, we did everything, right, Lynn? And so that's not a liaison, that's a coordinator. So I want to try to transition, transition this from coordinating the event to being a liaison, and, and more advisory, and, and just making sure that, you know, the resources required are being met. So I think we can talk more about that. And I'm, you can, you can push back on that if you want, but that's, that's what I would recommend.
Well, I, I think the important thing is that we identify what the best method to implement this is, and identify those roles. As you mentioned, those of staff, those of the volunteers, and what the liaison could contribute. Until we get to that point, then we don't really know what the assignments are going to be. But I think that's a good start and a good way to get this kicked off. Another thing is, it's very important, it's January, but time is of the essence. A lot of the things need to be started early, especially those things involving fundraising, contractual arrangements between those people that are doing vending and those that are being the attractions that we bring in, like the petting zoo. We need to get those contracts executed probably within the next month or two, to make sure we can secure them. So the quicker we can get on this, the better.
I agree.
So I'd just like to note, I would be interested in assisting with that if, just as a note. So if we can decide that tonight, that would be fine, and I'd be more than willing to participate in that.
I mean, I'm fine, I'm fine with, you know, naming you as a liaison. I just felt like it was fair to define what that meant and what the time commitment and stuff is. But if you're willing to do it, I say go for it.
So were you thinking then, like, kind of Erin would be the lead from the city side, and then Jenny would work in conjunction with him, and Lynn, if Lynn's still willing to?
Well, definitely, what I was envisioning, again, this is just my, my envision, is that someone like Erin, or someone he would delegate, would, would coordinate this, which means having the vision, executing the contracts, making sure we're compliant with all the policies, coming up, you know, getting input on new ideas, coordinating the volunteers, assigning the volunteers for, for different tasks, scheduling the volunteers, promoting, working on the promotion. All of those things are, have been really challenging, especially the promoting part on the outside, because, I mean, it's not what I do. I don't have resources to do that, so.
One advantage we have this year is we don't have elections going on. So that will free up some additional staff time to assist in the coordination of this event.
I mean, Jennifer, I was spending 10 to 20 hours a week towards the end on this. So it's, I don't think you'd want to do that, but I think that a lot of what I did can be done by staff, now that there's kind of a template for it.
Yeah, I think, like you said, we're, we're kind of at a shortage with, with elections. Plus, we, we, I think we have at least two extra staff than we had at that point, right? Just because was Carissa gone at that point? Or she left shortly thereafter?
Shortly thereafter.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're actually back at the same number, because we had Connor gone, Carissa was gone, and the other position was vacant, too, so. But, but again, not having to deal with the elections, having to deal with three elections, two of which fell in between Fall Fest, one right before, and then another in a couple of weeks after, really limited some of our resources and capacity. We got it done, so it will give us a little bit more free time to devote to some of those activities.
And in terms of fundraising, I mean, us on the council can't do that legally, and staff can't either. So that is going to have to be a volunteer. And there's no better person to do that than Lynn, if she's still willing to do that.
Am I allowed, can I, can I ask Ms. Carver Quinn if she is still willing to participate? Or do I need to?
Mr. Mayor, you should invite her to the table, since you're running the meeting, but at the council member's request.
Ms. Lynn Carver Quinn.
Oh, Lynn, would you want to come up?
Thank you very much.
Okay, I do think it's very important to have a staff person on the, when we meet, because there's paying bills, there, you know, getting permits. I mean, that's kind of the central person. So it is very key to have a staff person assigned to us. And, you know, if Jenny, if you're, if you and Janet can work together, so you can kind of learn the ropes there. If we get started fundraising early instead of July, like we have the last couple of years, I will have more time freed up for myself to help out at crunch time. But the way it's been going the last couple of years, we haven't gotten the forms ready for sponsorship until, I'm out there in August, and I'm busting my butt, because it's not going out to people once, it's going twice, three times. So the sooner we can get started, the sooner we have time to open up in crunch time when it happens. But it would be great if we had both of you, Janet showing Jenny actually what it takes, because it's a lot. And then a staff person, it would be really smooth, so.
Are you willing to assist me that way?
Oh, absolutely.
And are you willing to participate still?
Yes, yes, I will.
And those are the key questions, I think.
And we'll get some things together, and I think we need to call a general organizational meeting. I'll check with everybody's schedule, and we'll try to get that arranged as soon as possible.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Lynn. Jack or Bill, do I make a motion now, since we got this kind of?
Yes, if you'll make a motion to approve those recommendations that we just read and that you made.
Okay, I move to approve the recommendations of Mayor Hanegraff for the 2025 liaison member appointments to the City of Columbus Commissions, Committees, and Boards as included in the staff report, item C3.
And that would include those that are being held over? There's a couple of spots that were held over, right?
All right. Should I throw that in there?
I think it's clear.
It's clear. It's clear. Okay. Somebody want to second it?
This is Jenny, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Any questions? Jenny?
No.
Jennifer, you want to vote?
This is Jenny, Jenny, I.
Janet, I.
Rob, I.
Ron, I. We'll go to item number four, Citywide Recycling Events, pages 20 and 21. Jack?
Each year, the city hosts multiple opportunities for the residents to participate in citywide recycling events. These events are communicated through a newsletter postcard distributed to each residence. The city is proposing six events for 2025, and those are exhibited as Attachment 1 in your packet. They are to include, in the spring, a bicycle drop-off day, a drop-off with coupon, a drop, an issue on the same date with free paper shredding here at City Hall, week of July 14th through 18th, pickup and coupon for two free items paid by the city residents, bicycle drop-off in the fall, and another drop-off day with free coupon items. And throughout the year, the battery, single sort recycling, and organic collection for the residents, and provides the compostable bags to be used for the organic program. In addition to the above events, there is funding available for recycling opportunities provided in other proposed community events, which we're investigating other ways to try to maximize our ability to obtain county funds to fund this and expand our recycling efforts.
Thank you, Jack. I'll make a motion. I move to approve the proposed citywide recycling events as exhibited in Item C4, Attachment 1, January 22nd, 2025, City Council Packet.
Mr. Rob, I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any questions?
I have some, I have a question. Jack, in number five, it says, in addition to the above events, there's funding available for recycling opportunities provided in proposed community events. I had sent an email, I don't know, maybe a month or two ago, to Lori suggesting that we also offer recycling of election signs, or, you know, the signs that people have in their yards for school events and things like that. We learned that there is a recycling center in Mound that takes these and actually shreds them up and makes them into new, new coroplast, which is the material that those signs are made up to. Ron and I collected a whole bunch of them, a whole trailer of them, and hauled them down there. I don't remember when that was, in November or something, after, yeah. And they were, they were thrilled to get them, they were thrilled to work with us as part of, if we wanted to try to do that for recycling. And what I've also learned is Anoka County and Washington County, their central recycling centers will take them, but they'll only take up to five. So it doesn't really do much good. So what I had proposed to Lori was that maybe what we could do is make it known that if people have those signs, whether they're from elections or from, you know, school, graduation things or whatever, they could drop them off here, there'd be a designated spot, and maybe once or twice a year, you know, someone on staff could haul them down to Mound. And all you have to do is call and let them know that they're coming, and they come and help you unload. And if there's funding available, that could pay for the time of the, I'm assuming it would be Public Works, but whoever ends up driving down there and pay for the cost of the gas and things like that. So if that's, if that's what that item means, and I would propose adding that to this list.
That is something I know that she's checked on, and I think that's going to be added to the list of services that we'll provide.
Is that appropriate to add to this list, or is this, is that not considered an event?
No, I think it'd be appropriate just to add it, just to make sure we have it in the record.
Okay.
So that motion passed, right?
No.
No, we didn't take the vote. That was just discussion. That was a discussion.
Okay, you're still discussing. So that would be an amended motion?
Yeah.
Yep. So I would, I would, well, who made the, who made the first motion?
I did.
Do you want to amend your motion to include that?
Yeah, include that. I can't, I can't repeat all that.
Just that you're, they're adding recycling of those coroplast signs.
Okay. So we had a motion, and we had it seconded by Rob, if I'm right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Would you second that amendment?
Second that again.
Thank goodness, okay. Now we can vote.
Take a vote, Jennifer.
Jenny, I.
Janet, I.
Rob, I.
Ron, I. We'll go to Item B, Consultant Staff Report, and we'll go to City Engineer, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The one item I was just going to report was to indicate that we did provide additional language in the engineering services contract that was acceptable to the finance director and city administrators. So the signed contracts were returned this evening, so.
Well, thank you, Brian. We'll go to the city attorney next.
Just one item also, at the request of the council, I spoke with Margaret Vessel about doing another Day on the Hill, which always seems to be well attended by the council. Just as a reminder, the Day on the Hill follows the scheduling of League of Minnesota Cities. So if council members want to take part in their morning program, that's an option for you. And then we would meet at Larkin Hoffman Public Affairs for lunch, have a quick recap of what's going on in the session. Hopefully, things will have settled down by then in terms of who's leading and who's...
But they actually are in session.
Right. And then, per whatever is on our legislative agenda, I believe we have two items, a capital improvement item and a fiscal disparities item. We would get an update on that, those pieces of legislation, and then you would go to the Senate offices and the House offices and catch folks as we can to advance our cause. So it's usually a fun day, usually a productive day, and I believe it's March 6th. So that would, the city administrator would notice a public meeting since you'd be together as a group, and we would get that scheduled and work with our delegation to make that a productive morning and afternoon.
Sounds great.
Thanks for checking on that.
Yeah.
Anything else, Bill?
That's all I've got.
Thank you. We'll go to City Council Reports. Jennifer, you have anything?
No.
Janet?
Yep, I have a couple of things, actually just one thing. One is, it is the report from the Cable Commission meeting that I attended for Sue, well, in Sue's place. And this was just last Friday. So there were a number of things that came up that I thought would be of interest to the, to the board. The first one is that Paul Peterson, as he has talked about his willingness to help us, I mentioned the Credy acoustics that we continue to have in this room, and he said he thinks it might be the speakers more than the microphones. So if you give him a call, he will come out here and he'll do his magic testing and all that, and hopefully help us solve that problem. So that was good news. They did recognize Sue Wegman's work on the, on the board with the little party afterwards, so that was kind of nice. And then the last thing is, he brought up an organization called MACTA, which stands for the Minnesota Association of Community Telecommunications Administrators. And they have also a legislative platform that they are asking their members to support. They were on the Hill last year. And this is really kind of acting as an advocacy organization to help shape the sort of rapidly changing telecommunications landscape. What it really boils down to is that there used to be a fair amount of dollars from the cable franchise agreements, and with things going to broadband and less people subscribing to cable, that money is drying up. And there's, this organization is lobbying to try to tap into some of the broadband dollars that are flowing through the cable companies. And of course, the cable companies aren't wild about that idea. So I think they're going to ask for a contribution from their member cities, and for us, we would be asked for about $100. This is nothing we have to take action on, now it's more of an FYI. So I, I told them that I would bring that to, to the council, just so that you had a heads up on that. And you might, as they develop this a little further, you may want to ask if Paul wants to come and give us an update on that. And that's pretty much it from that meeting.
Thank you, Janet. Rob?
No report, Mayor.
All right. I have the Park Board report, but I'll wait until we get down to that. We'll go to the Personnel Committee report. Janet?
So there's a memo that I put in the file for everybody, and I won't, I won't read this unless you guys haven't had a chance to. Anybody want me to go over what's in there?
Was it in our packet, or is it?
It was emailed out, and then it was, here. I'll give it, oh, got it. Okay. So it doesn't sound like you?
I have not.
Okay, so let me, let me just briefly go over it. So we had received approval from the council in November to post a part-time, up to 15 hours a month, contract position for a recording secretary, recording, to record the minutes. So as you may know, our minutes have been pretty much delayed in getting out, and that's not, that's not ideal, and it's not how we want to do business. We've looked at, we've had an organization called Time Savers try to do our minutes, and they haven't really created minutes of the quality that we want. In the past, staff has done it, but staff is always challenged because their, their days are taken up by, by things that are more urgent, and, and they always, minutes always kind of get back to the back burner, and then they get behind on those. So we, in the past, there has been recording secretaries, they've been employees, but they did recording, they recorded the minutes for council meeting and Planning Commission, they did more than just the council minutes. This position would only do the council minutes and then notes from the workshops. So when we talked about this in November, we were authorized to post the position. There was about $3,600 annually that was built into the budget, and that was initially earmarked for paying time savers. We posted the position on November, I'm sorry, on December 9th, on the website, in the social media channels, on the dynamic sign. And then I contacted some people that I thought might be interested, and I also contacted Pastor Brad Friedland down at the Crossroads Church, and asked if he had anybody in his congregation that might be interested. And he actually did, and sent us a referral, and this was Danielle Peacock. She lives in Forest Lake, and we interviewed her on January 10th. She is formerly 23 years at a company called R&amp;D Systems, and it's now known as Biotechne. I know this company pretty well, they're a biotech company. And she was in charge of shipping, and she rose through the ranks in that organization, starting as the, like a shipping administrator, and then was moved into a supervisor position, and lastly into a manager position. She took minutes for all of their management meetings. So she's not done it for a municipality, but she has done it for an organization. She described herself as detail-oriented, an independent worker, dependable, a clear and attentive communicator. That is really what we saw when we interviewed her as well. Jack has reached out to the three references and got pretty much the same assessment from those, really glowing results. She says she can meet the expectation of getting our minutes out for review in three to seven days after the, the meeting is held, and she's immediately available to start. So I'm willing to take any questions, otherwise I can make the motion to move forward with contracting with her.
I have no questions. Jennifer?
You can go ahead.
I have none.
Oh, you have no questions? I have, I have, I reviewed her information, she looked like she seemed more than adequate. And you met with her and seemed like it, everything went well. So was, the, the pay range seemed adequate? No, so no, on my account, everything looks good with that.
Okay, good. Do you have any, Jack, or, Rob?
I have one question. How, how do we come up with the hours, like 15 hours a month?
Basically, two meetings, two meetings a month plus a workshop. And from our past experience with staff, they, I mean, it really depends on how long the meetings are, but they average about five hours per meeting to write up the minutes. So that's how we came up with it. I mean, it's going to take her longer, probably the first few sets that she does, but...
And it was up to 15 hours, so there's flexibility there, correct? It's not a flat 15 hours?
No, no, she will charge us by the hour for what she, but, but that's, you know, that's what we told her to kind of expect, and that's what we would expect from a budgeting standpoint. But certainly, if we end up having extra meetings or things like that, that it might go above that.
So would we expect that she'll, she'll do this, type into these minutes here at the city offices?
She will do this likely from home. I mean, she'll prepare the minutes from home. She may be here, especially the first few meetings in person.
Okay.
But she will more than likely do most of her compiling of minutes from the recordings.
Okay.
When I meet with her, I will encourage her to come to a few of the city council meetings in person. You can get a better sense of the flavors than you can even when you watch it remotely on Zoom. But that kind of gives you a little bit better understanding of maybe some things going on, some things in minutes taking, or essentially having better background on your material, so we can be able to write it up much better. And the other thing I'd like to do is give a, a big pat on the back and a big thank you to Lori Spangler and Eleanor Hahn, who stepped up, and they've come up and taken over the creation of the production of these minutes here in the last two months, after we've had two or three things that didn't work out for us. And we hope to get all these caught up by our February 12th meeting. They did a great job.
I agree. So if there are no other questions, then I would move to direct the city administrator to execute a contract with Ms. Danielle Peacock for recording secretary services, as described in the posted position description, and at a pay range of $20 to $25 an hour. We believe that her professional experience and her skills would be a valuable addition and a key to improving our public access to our meeting minutes.
I just have one more question. Would she then be an employee of the city or a subcontract?
She's a subcontractor.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And, and just, I don't remember, Jennifer, if you were here when we were talking about this before, I guess not, but the reason we were going with a subcontract is because she meets the definition of a subcontractor. She can do this whenever, on her own schedule. We're not really directing her work, she's using her own...
Computer and working remote.
Yep.
Yes. And this is Jenny, and I will second your motion.
Thank you.
We got a motion on the table? Any discussion? Any questions? Having none, Jennifer?
Jenny, I.
Janet, I.
Rob, nay.
Ron, I. Are you done now, Janet?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Sorry. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll go to the Park Boards. I was...
Sorry, Planning Commission.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Your debut, your debut.
They both start with P.
So, yeah, Planning Commission, there's a Planning Commission meeting. I know several members are in here tonight. Planning Commission meeting 115, Garage Solutions condominiums, CTI, also known as Man Caves on Lake Drive. They requested an amendment to their existing CUP to add two additional buildings, which would make seven total buildings, I believe. And so that was reviewed by the Planning Commission and verified, the verified site plans and documents were in order and recommended this to move forward to the council. I talked to Jack about it before the meeting, and I know that Ms. Carver Quinn did as well because she's on the Planning Commission. Because it was not on the agenda for tonight, and was mentioned at the Planning Commission that it would be, this will be addressed at the next city council meeting to allow for two weeks to make for any changes or questions that need to be addressed with CTI. So just know that that is why this is not on tonight's agenda, we had quite a bit to cover anyway. One other note, there's an item that was removed relating to reviewing zoning changes to the northwest for a corridor. That was put on hold, I think, because of some watershed questions and some variances that way. So just know that that is TBD, to be determined. And that is it for Planning Commission.
Thank you, Jennifer. The next item was a Park Board report. Park Board met last night, and I'll just get some key points here. We talked about the dugouts out on the, the ball field across the street, and at this time, FLA, or Forest Lake Athletic Association, don't have a lot of information at this time. They're waiting to, some issues with the Forest Lake City and the school district on funding, and they budgeted, and there's just a little mix-up going on here. But hopefully by March 25th, they'll be in, and this thing will get settled on the dugouts, what we're going to do with them. The other thing we talked about, removal of dead trees. At this time, two bids came in. I should let JW talk about it, he's up next anyway. But we had two bids come in, and they weren't apples to apples, and he can discuss that one. He's got, going to resolve that issue. We also should let everybody know that Ryan Stark of RVES Landscaping is not going to cut our grass anymore, so that's another issue that JW is going to, or Jim's going to talk about, what's he gonna, how we're going to plan that out. And the board is still working on a master plan, and their committee is meeting February 19th with Ellie, and they're moving along. So that should be complete pretty soon. From that, we'll go right over to Public Works. Jim, you got any?
Well, I thought you were going to cover my whole report for me, but I guess not. Mr. Mayor and Council, last night at the Park Board, we did talk about trees. I met with Jack Davis this morning, and we kind of hashed out the, what we'll call apples to apple tree bids. And we did go with uppercut tree service. tree bids, and we did go with uppercut tree service, and they did start today and are probably three-quarters of the way through what we hired them to do already. So if you walk through the park tomorrow, you're going to notice a lot less trees in there. As far as Ryan Stark, I met with him and kind of went over our park contracts, both the mowing and the field contracts, to make sure that what we were going out for bid for was what he is currently doing today. We made a couple of small adjustments, but, I mean, everything was pretty much what we agreed upon in 2008. So I compiled a bunch of bid paperwork, and I gave that to Jack, and him and I have kind of been discussing that, but, you know, kind of wanted to work through the next couple of meetings here, but in the next week or so, I anticipate that we'll be going out for, you know, bids on both of those contracts. That's what I have. Take any questions, if anybody has any?
I have a quick question. So was Ryan at the end of, like, was if he had decided... If he was going to continue to do this, would he have had to rebid the contract, or was he halfway through the two-year contract that he had?
We approved basically his contract in this year's budget, so none of them were signed at this point, but he bowed out before they were signed.
So he was up to be renewed anyway?
He was up to be renewed.
Thank you.
So this is Rob. What was the purpose for Ryan not wanting to come back to our community? Is he closing business or just getting overwhelmed?
He's closing business.
Okay.
So he's... He basically is shutting down shop and entertaining new job opportunities. So I think, you know, he's been doing it for a lot of years, and, you know, that kind of business, if it rains outside, or, you know, you need to cut grass and do field maintenance while it's nice outside, and, you know, it's a lot of time away from his family and things like that, and, you know, he's just had enough.
You know...
Looking for a nine-to-five job, or a seven-to-330, or whatever, whatever it may be.
Okay.
He did an amazing job and had a lot of pride in his work. Does he have any recommendations? I mean, sometimes getting a recommendation from somebody, you know, they have like-minded associates that they can recommend.
So I asked that question, and he recommended a couple of people that I have those contacts, and I grabbed a couple of more out there. So at this point right now, I have a list of four, maybe five people that I'll contact.
Did a good job, Jim.
Thank you.
But he already cut three-quarters of the trees down?
Yeah.
Boy.
So I... They basically, they had a crane out there and a lift, so they had a guy in a lift that would go up and put a choker on the tree, and then they would hook that crane to it, and a guy would cut it off at the ground, and they were taking whole trees and dropping them in the parking lot, limbing them in the parking lot, hauling out the logs, and then chipping the rest of the brush.
Did they do the west side first, or...
They started on the west side and took what they could get, but they knew that they had a crane coming today, so then they moved over to the east side, which is where they used that crane for most of it, so...
Are these all oak wilt? Trees that died?
Ash trees.
Oh, they're ash trees? Okay.
I think he... Jesse Messina even said that there isn't a live one in there, is there?
I don't think so.
I thought he said that. Just to let everybody know, the reason we're doing it now is the ground's frozen, so we don't dig a lot of holes. Yes, whatever. Man, that's quick.
Yeah.
Okay, we're on to Public Works City Administrator's Report.
My only update is just to remind you that the local government officials meeting is January 29th. You want to go to that, you've been sent the notice, or contact me and I can make the RSVP for you. And also for Jenny and Rob, we want to get you registered for, or Scott, for the newly-elected officials training with the League of Minnesota Cities. I think you'd ask a question about certain classes.
Yeah, and I already registered. I talked to Lori.
Very good, all right.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Anybody else have anything to discuss tonight? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Do you want to do announcements?
Pardon?
Announcements?
Read the...
Do we need to do that?
Thanks.
Yeah, you bet, man.
I haven't been in this position long. Item E, Announcements and Reminders, Park Board Meeting, January 21st, oh, that was yesterday. City Council Workshop, February 4th, 2025, at 5:30. Planning Commission Meeting, February 5th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. And a City Council Meeting on February 12th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m.
I'll move for adjournment. Rob?
Jenny, aye.
Oh, you want to second it?
Oh, Jenny, I'm sorry, I seconded the motion.
We'll take a vote.
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Ron, aye.